Good morning. It got very quiet all of a sudden. Apparently, we know it's time to start. And it is time to start. It's 10 o'clock, and we welcome you to our regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. We'll begin with the pledge, and it's my turn to lead the pledge. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Our first agenda item is public comment. We restrict public comment in certain ways, and that's all spelled out in our agenda. But one I will mention is we have a three-minute time limit. And our little box up here will show a yellow light when there are 30 seconds left, and you'll hear a beep, and then you'll hear a bunch of beeps when the three minutes are gone. Welcome, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Jim Jackson. At the last meeting we had, I was accused of lying about trucks up on Tony Court. I don't take that lightly. I've been called many things, but a liar I will not tolerate. Here's the proof: three videos of trucks by Knox up on Tony Court, coming and going. The thing that disappoints me is that that was brought up at the very end of the meeting, and there was not a single response from anybody in this room to challenge that. I was told I could come back this meeting and respond while I'm here. I think that we, your constituents, deserve a little bit more respect than if we're challenged in here by somebody that calls us a liar, and it's not true. That deserves a response from you folks. This individual also has been given the keys to the kingdom in Douglas County. He has his quarry out there off of Johnson Lane, and now he has another one going in down at China Springs. He's allowed to do whatever he pleases in this valley, and he has shown that he does that. And a friend of mine was going to be here this morning with some other proof about other stories that have been told by this individual that are not true. This is who you have jumped in bed with on a business matter. Not right, not fair at all. Anyway, I will give this to Jennifer. You can look at it at your pleasure. But these trucks were coming and going, and he could say, "Well, maybe they got lost on their way up to Johnson Lane to go out to the pit." No. When they left Johnson Lane, they turned south, going down East Valley. They were not lost. They were doing it deliberately. Now, what can you do about it? I don't know. We're hoping you do something, because this is getting worse and worse and worse. So I am not the only one that had seen the trucks up there. This was not my film. I did not video it. It was somebody else up there on Tony Court that did. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Is there any other opening public comment on matters not on the agenda? With that, we will close public comment and move to approval of agenda.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Gardner.
I move for the approval of the proposed agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Tolbert. We're going to pause just one second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Moving to the consent agenda, I will point out that Item H was inadvertently left on the consent agenda when it is, in fact, included on the administrative agenda. So if we could have a motion for Items A through M except for H, that would be ideal.
Madam Chair, I propose we approve the consent calendar. Items A through M excluding Item H.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tolbert, seconded by Commissioner Rice. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Moving to the administrative agenda, we will, we are going to take these a little bit out of order. We are going to start with 7.3 for presentation-only ceremonial presentation of Proclamation 2025 P-087, proclaiming October 2025 as Community Planning Month in Douglas County. We are pleased to have with us today Kate Morales O'Neil. She is our principal planner, and we also are going to ask Commissioner Tolbert to present this, to make this presentation.
Okay, so thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me this opportunity to present this proclamation. This is something that, in my other life, in my regular work hat, I work in quite a bit. And also, I don't know if you know Ms. Morales O'Neil, but my son has just changed his major for land use planning in UNR, so we got another one coming. So, that said, this proclamation, 2025 P-087, by the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, designates Community Planning Month, whereas change is constant and affects all communities, urban, suburban, and rural alike; and whereas planners help communities navigate change with expertise and data-driven insights, providing better choices for how people live and work; and whereas community planning ensures residents can meaningfully participate in shaping the future of their communities; and whereas the success of planning depends on elected and appointed officials who support and champion effective plans and implementation; and whereas October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States, endorsed by the American Planning Association to highlight the essential role of planning in addressing housing, transportation, land use, and other critical issues; and whereas this month also recognizes the dedication of planning commission members and professional planners who serve Douglas County, Nevada, and whose contributions strengthen our communities; and whereas the Nevada Chapter of American Planning Association will host its 53rd Annual State Planning Conference on October 23 through the 24th, 2025, in Minden, Nevada, with the theme of Homegrown Nevada: Planning Today for Nevada's Tomorrow. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners that October 2025 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in conjunction with the national celebration with gratitude for those who help build stronger, healthier, and more resilient communities.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner Tolbert and all the commissioners. It is an exciting month, this month, for planners, especially here in Nevada, because we do have our planning conference, which is going to be hosted right here in Douglas County at CVI. Besides the sessions we have planned and mobile sessions that we have planned, we have our distinguished Chairwoman Hales, who is going to be doing the opening for us at the conference, and will also be reading the proclamation that we have here. The mobile sessions are very exciting. We're doing a session on Martin Slu Trail. We're doing historic Dengberg Ranch, Genoa. We're doing a walking tour also up in the basin, starting on Cale Drive, with that TRPA is going to be the point person up there. So it's going to be such a great opportunity, because it's planners from all over the state, and we're really going to be able to showcase Douglas County. The other thing I want to do is highlight the 2025 DeBoyer Awards for Excellence in Planning. We have one of our own, Maureen Casey, who I'm so glad that she's here today. She is our Chairwoman of the Planning Commission. She was nominated and will receive the Distinguished Leadership Citizen Planning Award, which is, let me read it so I don't mess it up, is, this is for an individual who has advanced or promoted the cause of planning in the public arena. Nominees may include planning commissioners, advisory board members, other appointed officials, neighborhood leaders, community activists, and others who do not earn their living as professional planners and who are not elected officials. Please join me in congratulating Maureen Casey on this distinguished award. Maureen? Come on up here, Maureen.
You have to take pictures with me, and I get to stand behind you, because you're smaller than I am. That's how, oh, Nathan, I can get behind you. Yeah, do you want to say anything?
I've been in government for 40 years, and I have to say that working with community development here is one of the best highlights of my life. All my encounters with staff over the past seven years have been the most professional, and working with the boards that I've worked with here have been most pleasant, and I have to thank you for the opportunity to serve. And I hope to continue for another four, when my time comes up at the end of next year. And I do enjoy working in Douglas County. The people are wonderful, and it is home. My husband will attest, I don't do this for the money. It has to be a labor of love. Thank you.
of Proclamation 2025 P-086, proclaiming October 2025 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Douglas County. We have with us today Melissa Elgus, Director of Community and Foundation, Carson Tahoe Health, and Jen Forsany, Director, Program Director of Family Services and Family Violence Programs for Family Support Council. We also have Veronica here with us, and the Executive Director of Family Support Council. Proclamation 2025 P-086, declaring October 2025 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a pervasive issue that violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity through the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic abuse and control; and whereas domestic violence affects people of every age, race, gender, and socioeconomic background, and addressing it requires the collective commitment of all Douglas County residents to reduce harm and promote healing; and whereas the effects of domestic violence extend far beyond the individual, causing lasting impacts on families and weakening the health, safety, and well-being of our entire community; and prevention through education, intervention, and accessible support services is essential to breaking the cycle of abuse; and whereas survivors of domestic violence demonstrate remarkable strength and resilience, yet often encounter significant barriers when seeking safety and support, including fear, isolation, lack of resources, and societal stigma; and whereas local organizations, such as the Family Support Council of Douglas County, provide vital services by supporting survivors, advocating for families, educating the public, and promoting healthy, respectful relationships; and whereas Abbey's Crossing, a confidential shelter for women and children, offers life-saving refuge and supportive services to those fleeing violence, creating a safe and healing environment for survivors as they rebuild their lives; and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October serves as a time to honor victims and survivors, to raise awareness, promote prevention, and recognize the critical contributions of advocates, service providers, and community organizations working to eliminate domestic violence in Douglas County and across Nevada. Now, therefore, we, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Douglas County, Nevada, and we call upon all citizens to support survivors, participate in prevention efforts, and strengthen community partnerships to create a safer, healthier, and more compassionate society for all. Good morning, everyone. My name is Veronica Lachance, and I am the Executive Director for Family Support Council. So, behalf of our agency, I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This proclamation not only raises awareness, but also affirms the county's commitment to supporting survivors and strengthening our community's response to violence. Last year, the county saw almost 600 reports of domestic and verbal violence, and every day, our advocates work alongside survivors as they take courageous steps toward safety and healing, and this recognition helps amplify their voices. We are grateful for the county's partnership and continued dedication to ensuring that all individuals and families in Douglas County can live free from violence. We'd also like to invite you all to this evening's candlelight vigil. It will take place at the Museum and Cultural Center from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. Thank you so much. at this a very long time. Tara Adio has been the President of the Board for a very long time, and they work tirelessly. And I know, because I used to be on the Board. They are dedicated, passionate, effective, and I have helped countless lives in really, really life-changing ways. So, thank you so much. All right. We are on 7.1 for presentation-only ceremonial presentation of Proclamation 2025 P-085, declaring October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I read the proclamation, I just had a few words I wanted to say. It's been my honor over the last, this is the fifth year, to issue this proclamation on behalf of the County Board of Commissioners. Some 36 years ago, a little over 36 years ago, I met a lady, and shortly after meeting her, it was discovered that she had breast cancer, and her prognosis was slim and none. I'm proud to say that 36 years later, she's still with us, and I'm proud to call her my wife. We've devoted ourselves a lot to this issue over the years. As I entered the county, I spoke with none other than Jen Toon to talk about some type of celebration throughout our county in that regard. And if you drive down 395 now through the town of Gardinerville, you'll see pink ribbons and pink baskets decorating 395. We also have some purple bows also there, and I'm glad that we're recognizing that as well. Okay? So it's unfortunate, this last proclamation that was issued, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, that it's a tragedy that that should happen in our county. And, you know, that's preventable. Breast cancer is not, okay? But we need to work to prevent domestic violence and also find a cure for breast cancer. So I'd ask the ladies that are here in pink today, some survivors and others that are wearing pink, please come up, including Jen. I believe we present this to Jen. And thank you once again, Madam Chair, for allowing me the opportunity to present this. Proclamation 2025 P-085, Douglas County Board of Commissioners, declaring October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer is the second-most, the second-most diagnosed cancer among women in the United States and remains the second-leading cause of cancer-related deaths, while also affecting men through, through, at, though, mispronouncing that, though, at lower rates. And yes, it does affect men. I've met several that have had breast cancer. Whereas mammography, that is a hard word to say, mammography, okay? An X-ray of the breast is recognized as the most effective method of detecting breast changes long before physical symptoms may appear, and early detection combined with improved treatment has significantly reduced mortality rates. And whereas advances in research, treatment, and awareness efforts mean that today, most people diagnosed with breast cancer in the United States live many years beyond their diagnosis, with more than 4 million survivors, the largest group of cancer survivors in the nation. And whereas during Breast Cancer, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we reaffirm our commitment to eradicating breast cancer and to supporting all those impacted by this disease. We commend the tireless dedication of advocates, medical professionals, researchers, and caregivers who continue to advance progress toward prevention, treatment, and cures. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners on behalf of the citizens and employees of Douglas County that October is hereby declared Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Douglas County with sincere support, a little tongue-tied this morning, with sincere support for the ongoing fight against breast cancer adopted this second day of October by the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. I'm Jen Toon, the Executive Director of Main Street Gardinerville. And, I mean, wow, look at all this pink. I want to echo what Commissioner Gardner said, and it really, I think we found ourselves a little emotional out there in how compassionate and caring our community is when we're talking about some very difficult things that affect our community and all of the incredible members of the community that work tirelessly to make sure that we are taking care of each other. So I don't feel I will, I mean, this is a wonderful proclamation, but we are doing a few things just to bring some light, and we are very grateful for our partnerships that we continue to foster with our healthcare professionals that are the ones that are truly the heroes in making sure that the moms, the sisters, the daughters are all being taken care of, because this disease affects so many, and it's just bringing a light on one of the many diseases that our community has. So what we can do in order to raise funds and put the fun in fundraising so that we can pour back into our healthcare providers and our healthcare facilities, we will. So if you see the pink flower bowls, you can sponsor them. Three-quarters of those proceeds will go to our partners at Carson Tahoe Health and Carson Valley Health Hospitals. And we do have a fun pink fun run on October 18th, again partnering with our community partners in health. And I think that it's a great way to wake up and get some endorphins, and I've never seen an angry runner, so we hope to see you down at Heritage Park. I would like to hear, does any of my, anyone? No? These women are beautiful, so just hug your moms.
Moving to Agenda Item 7.4 for presentation-only, presentation by the Nevada Department of Transportation, which we call NDOT, regarding the county consultation process, NDOT's Planned Annual Work Program within Douglas County and the One-Nit Nevada Process. We have Tracy Larkin Thomason, Nevada Department of Transportation Director, here with us, and we welcome you. You can sit if you would prefer.
You might want to just click it.
Good morning, everybody. And again, my name is Tracy Larkin Thomason. I'm the Director for the Nevada Department of Transportation and pleased to be here to talk with you this morning. So today, we're talking about our plan ahead, and as you say, together on the road ahead, I just love kind of the picture that we do to begin with. And let me get my, there we go.
Ms. Thomason, this is Mark Gardner. Hi. Again. I saw you last Tuesday, but you're speaking a little low. Could you, could you?
Use my outdoor voice?
Well, you know, last Tuesday, you did.
I did. I always say that's the one calling the kids in voice. All right. So we're here to really talk about a rural engagement, the process for working with each of the counties across the state. There is a formal, according to CFR 450 2.1, we are required to meet with everyone every five years. We do it every year. We have a cycle. So last year, in July, we did a workshop with the county staff, and then this year has come when we do the formal presentation and discuss any, answer any questions for you. I'm sorry. I'll get, by the time I'm done, we'll have this down pat. So the, yeah, here we go. I do apologize, but I will honestly say, my technology proficiency is commensurate with my age, or inversely commensurate with my age. So on the engagement process, we really start with, thank you, the county workshops, which again, which we held last year, July 8th, in 2024, and that's where really where the county staff, NDOT staff, law enforcement, and emergency services get together to meet and really talk about kind of the needs for the county. Step two is where we take back the results from that Step two is where we take back the results from that workshop and do an analysis on what projects, verify each request. We put it into short, mid, and long-range initiatives and identify the district tasks that we would put out that can be just done really at the, the local level. Then the One Nevada, the next one, this is our plan, which I pictured before. We have a formalized process where it goes in. Where you can see is the, the six things on the bottom are what we use to evaluate. So safety, preservation, optimize mobility, economics, economic viability, sustainability, and connecting communities. And we really take all that, put it down in there, and then prioritize them according to that. And then we have, we call it a kind of a harmonization project, process. And that's really when we start looking at the funding availability, the type of funding. For instance, we have some federal funding that is strictly for bridges. So that, that kind of goes in that category. We have safety funding and putting in there. So bottom line, we go across and do that on funding. And as we talk about funding, and then I will go into more specific to the local is, our main funding is based on federal and state fuel taxes. Those were established in 1993. And they have not been changed since that portion. And those taxes, which is 18.45 cents for the state and 18.45 for the federal part, is what we base our budget on, which equates to just under about a billion dollars a year. It ranges depending, sometimes we have a little bit more if we get grants and so on. And the point being is, when we look and evaluate the part of funding is, we literally have a backlog of between 1.2 to 1.6 billion dollars a year over and above our current budget. So for us to spend that, to look statewide. Sorry. I don't think I'm doing anything here, but.
Well, maybe I am.
Do you want to take questions as we go or at the end?
All I wanted to indicate, I, I think you need to emphasize that number. Can you give us that number again? Because I think it was the B, not the M.
You are absolutely right. I, you know, I have been with the department, I actually retired from it and came back. So I have 37 years with the Department of Transportation. And in these past couple of years, I have started to deal with Bs, billions, and not millions. But. Okay. I will speak louder again, but I'm trying to also face you guys. With that, like I said, it is billions, but you also look at, particularly in the last three years, construction prices, I'm sure you're very aware, increased dramatically, literally about 68%. We tracked within the state. It was about, our contract plans showed about just under 60, about 58% increase. That was primarily with asphalt, concrete, steel, glass. And it just basically reduces the buying power of what we had. And I don't think that's a surprise to everybody. Things have leveled off, but they haven't gone down. So I, we're at the new normal for prices and moving forward. And we're also the fifth fastest-growing state in the country. And Northern Nevada has been bursting at the seams all over, but it, it really is everywhere. We have it in Southern Nevada, we have it in Northern Nevada. We have it, you know, mining is coming back. We have 21 of the critical minerals needed or, or desired for the economy. So we're seeing mining starting to start up again. And I'm just stating a fact. I'm not here to, I'm not really advocating for anything. We are looking at different options. We'll see what moves forward. But I think it's not news to anybody that we are going to have to look at a sustainable way to fund our, our highway system, our transportation system and network as we move forward. But with that being said, I move to the more local in there. So from the 2024 County Workshop Update, they identified two needs to the county. The first need request was completed, and that was the parking situation along US 50 at Zephyr Cove. And the primary concern was public safety. And with no parking, we are continuing to evaluate up around, really all around the lake, the parking where we can actually remove as much off as possible. It's safer for everybody. The second need is the intersection at Riverview Drive, US 95 and Muller Lane, where the county, where we're looking at the access concerns. And where we are actually, I, we're currently evaluating the system in the Southern Sierra Corridor Study. And the study has identified this intersection for potential, for improvements. And then we're also collaborating with Campbell on their update of the regional transportation plan, which is also, covers this portion of the area. So on the district accomplishments. The US 50 state line to Kings Canyon Road, new pavement with safety signage, hydrology technology, and improvements. The US 395 state line to Leviathan Mine Road, new paving with passing lanes, hydraulics, lighting, and signage. And then downtown Gardinerville Project. Phase one was completed early in '25, and the phase two is now under review and right away. So there is progress being made in the area. On county.
Do you mind if I stop you here?
No, please.
Still getting feedback. The term hydraulic in here, I'm not sure, could you explain hydraulic? I'm not sure I understand.
What that probably means is drainage. Basically evaluate the drainage and did drainage improvements. I prefer simpler words, but. And then the county clubs, we're looking at the extra signage, stuff, the high-traffic volume for US 50 for July 4th, things how we can improve the traffic control and additional signs. And then also, we met with stakeholders as part of the US 50 Preservation Project to, to present the US 50 Corridor Management Plan project details. And work, that's kind of a work in progress.
Can I interrupt for a second? Ask you, that last one, with that deal with the.
Commissioners, if I, if I may make a suggestion, it's happening when two microphones are on at the same time, that both microphones are picking them up. So if we can, when the question's being asked, ask you to turn off your mic. That would be extremely helpful, sorry. And we will ask tech services to figure out how we can fix this in the future. Thank you.
It's just a real quick, simple question. Is that dealing with the possible reduction of the lanes up in Highway 50? Or is that off the table now?
It has been off the table, will stay off the table. I promise it's off the table. Oh, that's it?
We appreciate that reassurance.
All right. And the, the next with the State Transportation Improvement Program. We have one active project and one upcoming planned project in the STIF. The first active project is the US 50 Spooner Summit Wildlife and Trail Crossing using transportation alternative planning funds. And it's a study that is currently underway with wildlife cameras in place documenting the wildlife movement. And this will help identify and make recommendations for solutions for the wildlife and trail users to safely cross US 50.
So, oh, so, I'm sorry, I thought you were. Just, I didn't want you to jump off that because I got four questions from constituents that would apply to you, and I figured I would ask at the end. But since you're on Spooner Lake, I might as well ask you now, even though Spooner Lake's not in our county, right?
Yes, sir.
We go all the way down to the end. Damn. Okay. So anyways, I got an email from one of our constituents, and they asked if the roundabout of Spooner Lake is off the table now.
I, I honestly do not know the answer to that. That is not on my radar right now, but I wa, I don't want to say it's off the table. It's just not on my radar. But I'm making a note.
Assume you mean that you're not contemplating at this time, but that it might be contemplated later. Is that what you mean by off the radar?
I think it's part of that 1.2 to 1.6 billion dollar backlog, which I'm making fun, but, but seriously, it's just not on the radar. I'm, it's not off the table. Wait a minute, we're talking.
We're on Spooner Lake, so I was only asking the one. I was going to ask the others.
Go ahead.
No, I was going to wait till you get done or until you get on those other topics.
I seem to have a good sense of humor, so please ask anytime you want.
I think I got a great sense of humor. My wife and kids would, would dispute that, but I, I don't have any other questions at this time.
The second project is for construction in 2027. And actually, I am really, really looking hard to see if we can move this one up. This is at, oh, this is the Kingsbury grade. And this is two-inch pavement, cold mill and overlay with open-grated asphalt and pipelining to extend the drainage system life. So it's at the Topson and fiscal year in '27. So that's, our fiscal year starts in the middle of the year. We're already in fiscal year '26. And then the next steps, and this is continuing collaboration between NDOT and the county city staff. Our, continue our One Nevada process and the county workshops in '26. And the other thing I wanted to state is, we asked for and did receive one position in the last legislative session, and we're called a rural liaison position. And the intent is, and it just felt like we're not giving literally all the counties the attention that they really need. And while we have planning coming out and they're meeting, you know, our staff work great together. And there's, there's no question about that going forward. But we wanted someone who actually comes and meets one-on-one with commissioners around there that meets with the leadership in the cities and on there. And the intent is to learn more about your vision for the county and where we overlap so that there's a greater part of, as we're moving forward with projects, that they, they work together. So, and, and I would also emphasize that if you're, and this will be, you know, talking with your, your roadway staff is, is, when you're doing projects out here, if you're intersecting on ours and it just needs like a little bit of an addition, like you're meeting in, maybe you need a finish of a curb return, or you need a little bit of, some enhancement at the corner, come and talk to us on that because we find many times it is very cost-efficient for us to partner with you, like in an inter-local agreement, and just finish it. One, you usually get better economies of scale than we do. We have what I call the NDOT factor. But that we can, I think we can better partner on that. And I, and I encourage this across, really across the state because sometimes it's the little things, a sign here and there that we can do together that kind of keeps things just moving along.
So that leads to my second question. Okay, so we have a, we're trying to do a, a bike and walk path from what we call the Rancho's, which would be going down Centerville, which is an NDOT road. I'm not sure what the highway number they call that. And anyway, so it's my understanding, because we're trying to get the land from some landowners to allow us to do this widening bike path and walk path. And they're both indicating that NDOT is going to build a, I believe it's a seven-foot side, side of the road for people to walk on so that it's more safe. And it's actually, it's one of the most dangerous areas in the county when you start talking about public safety. Rancho's has the largest number of residents there. We have all of our, most of the county's recreational activities on Waterloo. So for them to walk from Rancho's there is the best way and outside of driving, obviously. And it's very dangerous for them to do so. But it's my understanding that's already being planned. I was going to ask you if it is, when it's going to be started. If you don't know about it, maybe you get back with me and I could let them know.
Get back with you. I, I don't know the specific details.
Okay. The other one is, I had a, somebody emailed me, one of the constituents, about trash on 395 and if the county would go pick it up. And we discussed that's an NDOT road. Do you guys do any planning or how do, how do you handle the trash off of the, of an NDOT road?
Usually it is our maintenance crews that go out and pick up the trash. We have, of course, have had adopt a highway over the years. It's not, the adopt a highways are not as active as they were 20 years and so on. And sometimes it's just simply for the fact, for the safety on the, the traffic is not the same as it was 20, 30 years ago.
Plus it's a 1.3 billion budget deficit you have, I'm sure.
But I will talk to the, the local supervisor. And I'm sure most of you are more familiar with, and I mean, the maintenance crews in the area really are usually your first, first line of action with us.
Last one deals with that Centerville Road we were talking about. It, it, when it, when there's a turn onto Waterloo, which takes you to the park, to the community center and so forth, really dangerous turn. And I had one constituent, and there's others that have mentioned, but one guy just stays on me over and over again. And why don't we build, meaning the county, a roundabout there for the safety? We explained it's not a county road. And they asked if I would contact NDOT. And I said, isn't this wonderful? NDOT's going to be here today, and I could ask you about that. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that road. It is really, really dangerous, the way people are trying to get on and off of it. So if you have an answer now, great. If not, if you can get back to me, I'd appreciate it.
It has been a few years since I have driven it. I, I usually do come down and spend a week in Douglas County each year. That's a, a personal choice, a vacation. But I will, we will drive it before I go back.
It's an intersection of Centerville and, and Waterloo there.
By the way, that did conclude my presentation, so if you have any questions.
Are there other questions? Commissioner Rice, do you have questions?
I would like to thank NDOT for their partnership and what we're doing at Lake Tahoe. We had a monstrous problem at Zephyr Cove, and that has been resolved, for the most part. Some people would argue with that. But now we have to move down the highway towards Nevada Beach and other dangerous areas with people parking on Highway, Highway 50 in areas that cars were never designed to, to park in. So I want to thank NDOT for all of the cooperation that we've received up there in reducing some of these problems. Every time I go over Spooner Summit, I'm amazed at the amount of equipment up there and the fact that you're actually moving and doing something. And that's going to be such an improvement for our county once we have the, the parking availability, moving people off of 207. Is it 207 there? I'm, 208. All the Sand Harbor extension, all of these things are, are actually happening. And I want to thank you for that. And it's, it's a great asset to the county.
I do, the kind words, thank you. We work also very closely with the Tahoe Transportation District, Julie Reagan and her group up there, to really see that, again, that we're trying to make sure that we're working in concert with each other.
Let's turn to our Transportation Engineer, John Earp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John Earp, for the record, fun fact, I want to thank Tracy for being here. But 35 and a half years ago, I actually sat in, in the same design squad as Tracy, and she was my supervisor, so it's been a long career, right? I want to, I came up here to answer Commissioner Tarkanian's question regarding State Route 756 and Waterloo Lane, Waterloo Road through Lampy Park. The county did apply for a Raze grant, and we were successful in getting a Raze grant to design a roundabout at that intersection and do some other improvements on Waterloo Lane, realigning it through the park. So that is in the works. We don't have a contract yet with Federal Highway Administration with the grant. Grants are moving really slow right now, as everybody knows with the new administration. So I just wanted to answer your question. We are moving, trying to move forward with that improvement.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Gardner?
Indoor voice. And she feels like I have the same sense of humor that Mr. Tarkanian has also. Oh, you put, you turned it on. Okay, okay, okay. Once again, I appreciate you being here today and, and also presenting to NACO last Tuesday. And I know that all 17 counties are fighting for improvements and their fair share. And we're, we're all fighting for the same dollar that you don't have, or billions. So anyways, but several things I wanted to, I did want to ask. Our public has indicated, and I feel. Our public has indicated, and I feel as well, traffic on 395 through town appears to have gotten, appears to be increasing by the day. Okay? Now, we're in the process of building Mueller, that hopefully will take some stress off of that. But have we done, or has, has NDOT done a recent study in regards to the amount of vehicles that we have on a daily basis through our, through our corridor? I, the last time I heard of a study, it was about five years ago. And so have you done a recent study? What, what's the result of that study? Or if you haven't, are you planning on doing a, a study?
I can pull, I can pull the numbers. We, we certainly do traffic collection yearly. I mean, we do it continually. So I can pull the numbers. I do not believe there's been one done in the last two years.
How do you do those studies?
Well, for the traffic counts, we can just literally look at, we can pull them. It won't be actually a full study, but I could probably have those numbers within a week. For, and we usually differentiate between regular, just regular car vehicles and heavy truck traffic.
Yeah, I think we are looking at both of those numbers. Do you do that through cameras, or, I mean, how, how do you, what's the process there?
You know, you're, it used to be we, you had those lines across the roadway and went over them. A lot are done by count, cameras and other devices. I actually am not up to speed on what we're really using out on the roads right now. But I do know we collect at certain points, and it won't be like every mile, but we should be able to give you what we have, actually throughout the county.
Thank you so much. That's good. You indicate, indicated, and I asked this question last Tuesday, a declining revenue and a 58% increase in costs. Do you have any thoughts in regards to your plans on how to reverse that trend?
I want to say, it's not necessarily declining, it's a stagnant. It just hasn't increased, so the, the buying power of what we have come in. You know, these are discussions that are happening also at the national level. They're looking at a way to, for sustain the National Highway Fund, the Federal Highway Fund, because generally there's a general fund infusion each year. And then, at, you know, there is many, we've had a group over the, the last few years, and this was, and I want to say this was in '21 legislation, there was a, mandated by the legislature, there was a study done to look at potential alternative funding for highway. And we're kind of pulling out and looking at those, some things like electric vehicles, you know, like what type, what would that be? But I also want to make it very clear, and I, and I specialize with that, I can educate, and I'm willing to talk about analysis on it. We will perform the analysis. I am not advocating for any specific.
Yeah, you, you made that clear last Tuesday, so thank you. But yes, as, as more people convert to electric vehicles, of course, our tax revenues, gas tax revenues do decline, so, and yet I understand that they actually create more wear and tear because they're heavier vehicles, more wear and tear on our vehicles. So that's, that's true in our county, on our county roads, as well as, as state roads. So I, I would hope that we need to take a look at that, so.
So with electric vehicles, it's still a very small percentage of the overall fleet in the state. However, the, the purchase rate, so each year we are about twice the national average of, like, it's like 14% of new vehicles being in. So eventually, it's going to become a, a greater and greater portion of the, the fleet. And the other, shoot, I'm sorry, I had a second thought there and it slipped away, but it'll come back in a minute.
Well, I, I only have two more questions, so maybe it'll come back in that process. Okay, we, I, we're in the process of building Mueller, and I know that there's a plan for a four-way signal at Mueller and 395. I understand the infrastructure is already in there, except for the actual signals. Do you have any time date? I mean, is that going to be subject to this billion-dollar shortfall you are, or?
This is one of the ones, there actually was a permit for that in 2006, and the installation. So I know the conduits are in place. Obviously, that's almost 20 years ago. There have been some increase in codes for the, the poles, so we're looking at that. I believe the, the cost factor is about $2 million to complete that. So, and I will be honest and tell you, that became on my radar this morning. So let me look around and see what we have.
It's pocket change, really, right? To billions for...
We're going to shake all the couches around, yes.
Okay. And I also, I live in Topaz Ranch Estates, and so the recent pavement from Pine View Estates to the state line has, has really been great, and I really appreciate what you've done down there. I know that there is a plan to move to, from 55 miles an hour to 65 miles an hour in that corridor, I believe from 208 to about Pine View Estates. I believe the signs are up and all, all they need to do is be reversed. But you have a, you have any kind of a timetable that our residents can expect that to happen?
No, but if the signs are, if the signs are up, then the change is made, but are they covered?
The, the signs are either covered up, the 65 is covered up with a 55, or it's reversed and, and, and it says 55, but you can see that the 65 is, so.
Well, I can tell you it's imminent, but I can't tell you the, the part, but I can, I can get back.
Thank you so much for being here. I do have one question. The intersection of Genoa Lane and 395, we don't have an acceleration lane going south if you're turning from Genoa Lane south, and we don't have an acceleration lane the other way either, turning north from Genoa Lane. And cars are going fast at that point, and so that would be one place I would also call your attention to. You're getting quite a list, and we appreciate your willingness to consider these things. I think that's, I, I live near the Swim Center, which is 88, and there's a roundabout on County Road in 88, and I've lived in that neighborhood over 30 years. And previously, it was just a stop sign and traffic went through, and then a roundabout was put in. And I just want to say that roundabout has allowed pedestrians from the neighborhood to the rest of the county. It's been incredibly improved experience living in that neighborhood since that roundabout went in. I do notice in the mornings when school's starting, there's quite a backup coming north to get to school, but I mostly don't even hardly want to call your attention to that, because I'm so pleased with how the roundabout functions, and I think that traffic still moves, it just slows down for quite a ways, and it's probably still going to get those folks through there faster than any other alternative would at that intersection. So just...
Chairwoman, that's because you live on the other side of the roundabout. I live on the side with the long lines.
That you get that, at around 7:30, you get that for maybe 20 minutes? Yeah, it, it is, it is backed up there, it really is, but not for long, and it still moves, I believe, so. Anyway, just a little, a little gratitude and a little feedback about that particular spot. And I think I heard you say you vacation here.
I used at Wally's. I come down for a week every December with the family and spend a toodle around particularly Genoa and then the downtown Gardner.
Well, we're delighted that you come here and, and, and do that, and, you know, welcome. And also, I'm just really pleased that you would take the time to come and talk to our commissioners today, and appreciate you coming back to work after 37 years, and your service to the, to the state. So thank you.
It's still fun.
Good, 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 good.
Thank you all.
Yes, is there, I think we're finished with questions? All right, all right. Thank you very much.
All right, let's reconvene. We will reconvene with Agenda Item Eight. We are happy to have Heather McDoan here and happy with the great work she's doing. Agenda Item Eight is for possible action, discussion to approve Work Order 001 to the 2024 Minden Tahoe Airport Planning Services Contract with J U B Engineers, Inc., and authorize the county manager or public works director to execute the work order and any required documents. Work Order 001 includes the scope of work for J U B to provide professional planning services to update the Minden Tahoe Airport's master plan for a cost that will not exceed Ms. McDoan.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission, Heather McDoan for the record. I'll try and liven this place up a little bit by talking about all the fun things at the airport today. So, thank you. With me, I have Mr. Neil Fraser. He's the aviation planner for J U B. He's going to give a short presentation to you guys in a minute. And also, I wanted to recognize I have two airport advisory commission members behind me, Mr. Bob Trumbly and Mr. Jim Lee are also here. So, we'll go ahead and get this thing kicked off. Thank you, guys, very much for giving us the opportunity to speak. As a part of our continued commitment to ensuring the Minden Tahoe Airport remains a safe, efficient, and community-focused facility, we're requesting approval today to update the airport master plan. Last year, this update was identified as a priority by our airport advisory committee and the FAA. The master plan was last updated in 2016, and it's recommended that we update it every 10 years, so we're right in line and track with that. As you all know, the master plan serves as the long-term blueprint for the airport's development. It helps guide decisions on improvements, safety, and how we meet the needs of both aviation users and the community. The planning firm for this project, J U B, was selected last year through a competitive RFQ process, and we brought them on for a five-year term. We're able to move forward with this project thanks to the grant we received from the FAA, which the board accepted at the September 18 meeting. The update process will allow us to evaluate existing facilities, forecast future aviation demand, and identify projects and priorities that align with FAA standards, local needs, and the county's vision. With the assistance of J U B, this process will also include opportunities for stakeholder engagement and public input, ensuring transparency and collaboration throughout the entire process. By completing this update, we will position the airport to meet future aviation demands while maintaining our commitment to safety, fiscal responsibility, and community benefit. So, thanks again, and I will let Mr. Fraser take over.
Thank you. My name is Neil Fraser, for the record. I'm with J U B Engineers. We're really grateful to be a part of this master plan process with the county, and so far, our experience working out here has been wonderful. We look forward to doing a great project. We'd also just like to offer condolences from our firm for the recent tragedies that have happened out here at Minden Tahoe and with some of the usership. We know that that's hard. It's the sort of thing that all of us that work in aviation have to deal with as a potential reality, but our job is to hopefully put you in the best position to create a safe environment for everybody that will use the county facility. I do have a short presentation, very brief, and after Heather's introduction here, I probably don't have to say a lot of it. I'll quickly just go through a few things here. Go ahead and move us forward. Because you don't do an airport master plan very often, I thought I would just kind of do a little introduction to that. Some of the reasons why you do that, Heather talked about that already a little bit in her intro there. We primarily, I like to say that doing airport planning doesn't make you very popular because the first thing that we have to do is kind of find where all the problems are and dig up the skeletons and bring those to light so that we can plan to mitigate those and bring the airport into compliance with standards, if it's not already. I think there's already great things going on out here at Minden, but we want to make sure that anything that we put in the plan going forward continues to keep us in line because not only the airport master plan itself and the ALP drawings, the airport layout plan drawings that come as a product of that process, but also all of the grant assurances that you've already committed to in the past are the keys to continuing to receive funding from FAA and the various mechanisms that they have for funding projects, capital projects, and other projects at the airport. And then, no, go ahead and, I was going to point out, no, yeah, point out one more thing here. This is the opportunity for the community, the usership, the airport, county staff, and the elected bodies, both the board, the advisory committee, and this board, to tell your story. What do you want the airport to be? We don't know, and we're not, our job isn't to make those decisions. Our job is just to guide the process. So, this is the opportunity to do that. You can go ahead. At the end of the day, when we finish this, there will be a few things that come out of it. One is, of course, a report. My direct supervisor likes to talk about how we put together a stack of paper that costs as much as your house. We try to make that effective, but we'll definitely have all of the paperwork backing up the process and all of the results that come from the planning effort. The most important piece of the whole thing is probably the updated airport layout plan. That is, that's really the guiding document for the airport for the next five to 10, maybe 15 years or more. Full-size drawings that show current conditions and future plans at the airport will identify a lot of the projects, and those will be highlighted in the report and demonstrated on the plan. Heather mentioned a public involvement campaign. We'll, I'll go through a little bit of what that means here in just a minute, but an important aspect of our planning is to make sure that this isn't done by two or three people just putting information on paper. And then, we will also complete a very in-depth airports, what they call a GIS survey. It's done with aerial survey and ground survey. It's a key data point that the FAA collects as a part of this process for a variety of different reasons, including the surrounding area and potential obstructions to the airspace and that sort of thing. So, that's another byproduct of the process. Go ahead. We've already, this was part of our, kind of our attack in pursuing the project. We've already identified some of the key issues that we know need to be addressed for future projects at the airport. I won't go through all of these, but just as a recognition that there's great things already going on out there, and there are also some things that we want to help you put into the plan if they're meaningful to the usership and to the airport and the staff and all of you folks. Go ahead. The plan itself is broken up into a variety of sections. Again, I won't go into a lot of detail. Heather mentioned this, too. We look at current conditions, and then we analyze how much traffic there is at the airport, what type of businesses, what type of users are at the airport, the flying clubs, the different groups, and compare that to, compare the current conditions to what the usership demand looks like today and what it looks like in the 20-year crystal ball, and then use that to help determine a series of alternatives that we'll bring to the advisory committee, to this board, and to the public to evaluate, get feedback, and then ultimately select a preferred alternative that will lay out the product of that ALP, that airport layout plan, and identify the specific projects that should be on your consideration list for years to come in the near and distant future. So, that whole process kind of breaks down into about seven distinct chapters or sections of the plan that we'll put together. So, through this process, there's a lot of different players involved, of course. This group here, as you know, your job is to provide final say, and before anything gets submitted to the FAA, you'll have an opportunity to review, offer feedback, and make approval. We are planning to engage a technical advisory committee or a technical advisory group, whatever term you want to use there. That should hopefully include members from the advisory committee already in place, but we would also invite the county to invite other representatives of the usership and also some of the community members that are affected or maybe in proximity to the airport so that we get a broad swath of feedback and information about what the airport needs or what the community needs through the planning effort. We'll simply guide the process and put together all the products. The FAA gets a couple of points in the process of the plan where they actually have to approve. They have to approve our aviation forecast, and then they approve the final ALP at the end of the, at the end of the project. And we go back and forth with them a couple of other times just to get some feedback and make sure that we're not doing anything that would be contradictory to advisory circulars or standards or compliance or anything like that. And then, any other local agencies that should be a part of the process, of course, the transportation department for the state often is involved. You may also consider some of the other government agencies that are located here. We don't know what all of those are. We'll be looking for input from Heather and from others. If Forest Service or BLM uses the airport for firefighting, if the airport is something that really affects the local emergency response community and those various agencies like that, we want to make sure we include all of those things in this process so that we're, again, getting kind of a full breadth of the effects and those affected by having this asset in your community. Then, I mentioned before, talking a little bit about that public engagement and public involvement effort. This is our overall schedule. We had intended that this project was probably going to start actually more towards the beginning of 2025. The federal government grant funding cycle that has had some hiccups this year set us back through that, so we're ready to start now. I was just telling these gentlemen back here, the benefit of that for us is that we've been able to wrap up a couple of projects that we have going on, so our entire team is ready to jump on this and start pushing this schedule forward as quickly as possible. You can see the different sections of the project kind of laid out there. Through the course of those four or five individual phases, we will conduct a variety of different public engagement and public involvement efforts. There will be an airport use survey that goes out to as many people as we can possibly get that to. We intend to conduct individual interviews with stakeholders. There will be at least four meetings of that technical advisory committee or technical advisory group to discuss some of the details and make recommendations. Again, that group should include a couple of representatives from the airport advisory committee, possibly a representative from the Board of Commissioners, others in the community that are affected or have a direct impact with, on the airport. We'll have at minimum two public open house meetings where we'll invite all of the public, and really, you know, it's intended to be all of those who are interested in the airport, who use the airport. We want to have them all get here and see what we're thinking and get their feedback. And then, we'll be back in front of this body at least a couple of times through the planning process so that you are up to date on what's going on and have an opportunity to approve the final products before they are submitted to FAA. And then, yeah, and then there will be a project website. Once we get to that first public open house, we'll launch that website, and all of the information that we put together will be available for whomever would like to consume that. So, that's my little spiel. Hopefully, that was brief enough but informative enough to do that. Please, if there are questions, I'm happy to take some shots.
Commissioner.
Oh, she wants us to fire? I got a few. First, you know, I want to, I guess it's, everybody knows that the airport is a huge element of the economic vitality of our area, and so we want to make sure that it grows properly and how best works together with our community. So, I guess that, to that point, one of my first questions is, how are you planning to notify and include those people in the areas, or if you've determined that, because that seems to be always a point of contention around here that we don't let people know? And then, where are you planning on having these open houses that will always be at the airport, or are you planning to maybe in the neighboring communities? Because our area in Johnson Lane is directly, you know, related, we're in the flight path. So, that's my first question. I'll go ahead and let you hit that one.
Yeah. I don't think we've nailed down where we'll hold the open house. We're open to doing that here. We can do it at the airport or wherever it makes sense. The notification process, typically, that includes, you know, a digital campaign, email, social media, but we've also often done mailers to everyone within a specific radius to the airport, and we'll plan to do that to make sure we notify as many as possible.
Can I jump in here? I have that question, too, and I see that on page 300, it says, 300 of our board packet. Douglas County Public Information Officer will be responsible for advertising public engagement and public involvement opportunities.
Oh, see, I forgot about that. You have a public information officer, I think?
We do.
Okay, yeah.
I thought he might be here, but he is not.
I was told that somewhere along the way.
Yeah. So, apparently, we have the responsibility of advertising that, which I actually kind of like because we do want to spread the net wide and give the law, we want to do overkill on public engagement because we don't want anybody coming to us saying, "Well, we didn't have a chance to weigh in on this."
Yeah.
Oh, back to you.
Thank you. We'll support however we can with that, providing the content and whatever, so.
Okay, so the next one is maybe a little farther into the weeds, but how will this master plan update address current and future land use compatibility under the flight path, especially for residential and school areas? I know right now, the one area between Hayborn and the Wild Horse subdivision is basically undeveloped for that purpose, but, you know, if we're planning on growth and expansion, how are you planning to address that in this plan?
Yeah. I love that question. Land use compatibility on and around airports has become a big issue in just recent years, and there's been some, both state-level and federal-level guidance concerning land use compatibility. Maybe the best way to illustrate that is just a quick story on a project we just finished where a runway extension was programmed in a previous plan, and it would just, in reality, it was not conducive with the neighboring property owners. Just wasn't going to work. And so, despite the desires to have a longer runway in that area, we decided it just couldn't be a part of that plan. It wasn't feasible. So, we have to do some sort of analysis to figure out what is appropriate for the airport. Is expanding, acquiring more property, which in turn acquires more airspace and more affected area of the land use compatibility? So, we'll definitely look at all of those things and then help or update if, I don't know if you have a land use compatibility zoning ordinance already in place across the county, but that's certainly something that can be looked at to help mitigate those areas of conflict, particularly for those folks who might be in the direct flight path in and out of the ends of the runway. I don't know if that was a good answer. I don't know if I actually answered your question, did I?
Kind of, but I guess, I mean, what influence is that? Is that going to be the community input? Or where is, you know, where does that addressing of that specific situation come from?
Yeah.
I mean, you're going to have to make some assumptions, but I guess what I'm getting at is how important is it that we get those neighbors out and balance the, what do you call it, the predication to have a NIMBY reaction versus the better, the greater good, those kind of things? How is there, you know, do you guys take that into account?
Yeah. There's really, there's really maybe three things that I can think of specifically. One is, you know, what is, what are we required to do by federal obligation because we've already got an airport and we're obligated to operate it safely? The second thing would be, what does the community have to say about it, or what local laws and ordinances are already in place? And then, the third thing is, yes, let's talk to them because they may have concerns, but we may also be able to offer some education to mitigate some of those concerns that are maybe misunderstood, or maybe the airport, and we misunderstand where they're coming from, but that seems to do a lot of alleviation. And that's often part of that public open house process when we get those people out and have them come and share what's going on, and we can talk about the realities of overflights and things like that.
And then, my last one, I'll let you guys have a chance, was, is noise. Is there a plan for like a noise contour study? Is that required by the FFA? FFA, I do that every time. I don't know what the farmers have to do with the air, but I say it every time. The FFA, like, and having like a noise exposure map or something like that, that shows what, you know, what's going on with the neighborhood and, or the neighborhoods around that area?
Yeah. So, the federal requirement for doing noise compatibility analysis is a pretty high threshold in terms of numbers of operations, and the Minden Tahoe Airport probably doesn't rise to that threshold to make a requirement. So, noise mitigation is really an activity that you're taking on as, you know, for goodwill and as a part of your obligation to the community. We are required to, in our scope of work, we are required to verify your existing noise contour, which has already been established. Unless the overall airport environment changes, I don't expect that that noise contour is going to change either. So, the ALP already identifies that, and it doesn't extend much beyond your property boundary for the airport itself. So, all of the other noise complaints are going to be goodwill efforts on the part of the airport, which I think you're already doing some noise mitigation already. But that's certainly a concern to keep in mind as future development.
I guess that's what we're talking about is the master plan, so we're talking about the future of it, which, you know, mastering means expanding, you know, putting in the infrastructure that we need to. know, putting in the infrastructure that we need to continue to grow. So that's why I want to make sure that as we expand, we're considering what that means and the impact on the neighborhood.
Right. Yeah, so as your runway environments could possibly expand through a master planned effort, then we would have to expand that, that look at the, at the noise interval.
I just have a couple of questions. I'm not going to focus on what your, your study is going to show. I just wanted to focus on how we got, your company was picked. Obviously, you're very informative and seem like you know what you're doing. Was this open to bid?
Yes, Heather McEnell for the record. This was open bid process and we went through a request for qualifications. It was completely done through legal counsel and the bids came out. I think we got three proposals in and we had a committee that went through and selected them and then it did go to internal review.
Well, you sound really great and I hope that your product is as good as your presentation.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I appreciate you being here today and this is something that I know that the, in talks with previous and current advisory board committee members, that this is something that really needs to be done, an update. So anyways, you asked a question earlier or you said we will be searching out, what should it be? What should it be? And I can tell you a couple of things that it should not be, okay? Because I know our public is very concerned about that. It should not be a commercial airport, okay? So I think you probably need to write that down if you haven't already heard that, okay? It should not be a commercial airport, okay?
That one has come up before.
Okay. Also, it should have and describe the need for east side restroom facilities, okay? So I know that that's been a hot topic also. I know that we tend to be, as I understand it, almost the soaring capital of the world and, and those restroom facilities on the east side are quite important as I understand it. So I don't see Ms. McEnell or the Airport Advisory Committee having really any issues with you really going through with a fine tooth comb, looking at, at what might need to be done there and updated in the master plan. Actually, I think they're excited about this process because it will create a blueprint from which they can advocate for increased improvements out there to, to assist our soaring and powered aircraft community to, to actually prosper. So I, I think that's great. And on a side note also, Ms. McEnell, I appreciate, even though this account, this, it doesn't show it in the agenda, 585054, however, that's only costing the county $29,253 out of our pocket and that's an important number for us to emphasize with our community. $29,253 is what's coming out of our pocket. The rest of it is federal funds. So congratulations and thank you for looking out for the public dollar in there. So thank you.
Commissioner, if I could just share one thing about your east side restroom and development, I think that that's been well imprinted on us. The first time I came and visited Minden, I went driving around the airport with Heather and we went all the way over to that east side and we were sitting there in the car and she just looked out at the bare ground on that side and just said, there just needs to be something glamorous over here. So I wrote down glamorous in my notes and I think I, I think I took it out of this presentation because it started to sound a little hokey, but hopefully we can, we can put a plan in place that'll allow you to do something glamorous on the, on the east side.
There is nothing hokey about glamour. You can, you can, you can go for glamour over there, I think.
We'll put it on the plan. You have to build it.
And my attitude is just something more than a tree.
Right, right, right. A hole in the ground.
Just do not touch my restaurant. Thank you very much.
That's on the west side.
I don't care where it is. Love the tail dragger. It stays.
Of course the tail dragger stays.
I had someone.
I think she goes for lunch. I have no idea. I don't follow her.
I asked this question at the risk of exposing the fact that I didn't read every word in the hundreds of pages of documents given to us, but I did have someone talking to me and I can't, about crosswind runway. Do you want to address that notion?
I can. I don't know what the question is. You currently have a crosswind runway. Part of our process is to evaluate the need for that. All of the runway orientations, that's just a standard item that we look at. I don't know, but I would guess that the data will show that you need a crosswind runway, but maybe they're thinking of second.
Is it functioning? Is it functioning well, the crosswind runway?
Do you know? Heather, go ahead.
Thank you, yes. Heather McEnell for the record. I feel like I'm screaming in this thing. Sorry, okay. So the crosswind runway that you're speaking of, that I've had multiple meetings with, with different stakeholders at the airport, is the old 2-1 runway that we're wanting to bring back and that was addressed. Neil and I have talked about it and I think, I believe it is actually in their scope of work to address that issue for the 2-1 crosswind runway and bringing it back for emergency landings only. And then also while I have the microphone, I'm just going to go ahead and publicly apologize to Eric because I didn't tell him I was going to make him a part of this master plan, but I did tell Neil that it was important for us to make sure that the county was involved as the huge following that the PIO already has. They're going to be in charge of the website, of all the surveys, gathering information and doing all of the work, but I am, I did volunteer, our PIO officer, to help disseminate that and make sure that we're getting the word out to as many people as we can. So sorry, Eric, but thank you so much.
Very good. I appreciate that and I appreciate knowing that part of your work will be addressing the crosswind runway. All right. Any other questions from the board? All right. At this point, we will go to public comment. Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Excellent presentation. Mr. Lee, welcome.
Thank you. Jim Lee for the record. Thank you for the opportunity and yes, we desperately need a new master plan because as near as I can tell, the way the current master plan happened was the previous airport administration gave a blank sheet of paper to Armstrong Engineering. They were paid, I think, about $800,000 for that master plan and, and they were told, I'm guessing, build me the biggest, baddest Reno International Reliever Airport that it's possible to build here in Minden. And so what we currently have is such things as a expansion of runway 3416 from 7,000 feet long to 11,000 feet long. So it would take it, it expands it both north and south. So it takes runway 34 further towards town and also closer to Johnson Lane. There is a control tower on the master plan right where runway 2-1 exists and there is a huge jet facility on the east side off of our new runway, our taxiway Zulu, which we call the Taxiway to Nowhere. That's part of the plan. We've already spent three and a half million dollars on Taxiway Zulu and it's not completed. Nobody's ever taxied a plane on it that I've ever seen and we need another one and a half million to complete Zulu. So the reason for Zulu was an east side jet center with deicing facilities to be able to take care of, of larger aircraft. Our 7,000 foot runway can already handle planes such as Boeing 737s, Gulfstream 4s, et cetera. We already have very large jets that come into Minden. So those, those are examples of what's in the current master plan that I think goes against what you commissioners want the airport to be and I think against what the townspeople of Minden and Gardnaville want. So I think what we're looking for, as far as I'm concerned on the AAC, is revamping the master plan towards a better rural airport that serves the current pilots, the burgeoning bush plane movement, the glider activity and jet traffic as well, which we already have. So I think the AAC meetings, we're going to have a meeting next Tuesday night. We're going to go over priorities of what we want to see in the future of the airport. I think that would be fantastic for the county to advertise these meetings and bring people to our AAC meetings in order to get the, the local input into what the airport needs to be. So in addition, Commissioner Gardner mentioned the 29,000 that's coming out of the county. It's my understanding it's not really coming out of the county, it's coming out of the airport funds, which in my mind is not the right way to handle this. The airport funds should be spent on physical improvements at the airport and not for planning purposes. So I would like to see the county be willing to invest more money in, in the airport primarily in terms of the infrastructure. The main thing we need are utilities so that contractors will want to build hangars. So if we can develop, you know, we've got the Pinion Arrow land, 77 acres we've talked about in the past and if we develop that, it's going to greatly increase the tax revenue for the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Johnson. The airport has kind of a special place in my heart, so I had to get up and I just want to quash one rumor right now. And this has been going on since 2011, that there, that we want to build a commercial airport out there, okay? And so I'm going to play devil's advocate for a second with you and say, let's say we want to build a commercial airport out there. Reno, Tahoe, how many, how many direct flights out to, to other communities can you get out of Reno, Tahoe? Very limited handful and it's because there's no demand. The airlines dictate on what an airport is going to do as far as its flights and direct flights. There's not a demand out of Reno. So even if this airport wanted to be a commercial airport, there's no way it could be. You would need to grow Reno beyond its gills before you could ever make this into a commercial airport. There has never been any discussion about making this a commercial airport. There has never been any discussion about making it a reliever airport for Reno since Stead is the official documented reliever airport for Reno. And as far as line, the aircraft and the weight ordinance, stuff like that, it needs to be very clear that aircraft weight is a, is a small factor in, in what you can and what you cannot land on this runway, regardless of the length. Each runway has what's called the, oh, now I'm going to run, there's the aircraft, the aircraft index and there's a pavement index, PCN. Well, no, that's pavement condition index, but I'm thinking of the, there's an index for the aircraft weight that looks at the wheel configuration, that how the, what kind of tires it has, how it's distributed and the composition of the pavement, of the runway. So that's what dictates it. As I've told people before, a good example of that is the 727 only weighed, if I recall correctly, 160,000 pounds, but it would destroy that runway out there because of the wheel configuration, whereas a C-17 weighing in at almost 500,000 pounds could land out there all day long with no problem, would not damage it. So just take into consideration those things when you're hearing this, that there never was a design for, to make it a commercial airport and even if you wanted to, there's no chance that it would happen. So, and as far as where Zulu was, that, there was in the works a while back that Nevada Division of Forestry was going to, were going to try to get all commercial, or sorry, all airport, the fire assets into Minden. So that's what Zulu was at the time. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for that institutional knowledge there. Appreciate that. Mr. Jackson?
Jim Jackson. I've been up here talking about the airport a few times. I think this is the first time that I can agree with the expenditure that you want to do coming out of county funds or however, wherever they're coming from. I think it's a worthwhile thing to do. If the master plan is revised to get rid of a tower, to get rid of any chance of commercial airlines coming in, I think that's a great thing to do. The idea of keeping it as a rural airport, hobby airport, whatever that designation can be, I think the people in the county would be very happy to know that that is the direction that you're going. Commissioner Gardner, your comment on no commercial flights, period, is a good one and I don't think that's where we're headed with this, but there is always, always a chance somewheres down the line that somebody wants to be an idiot and decide to try to do that, no matter what Reno says. So I think getting a master plan that says, no, this is not what's in the plan, the money is not there for it, we have no plans for that, I think is a good idea. But I think the 29,000, good way to spend our money. I agree with it for a change. So, thank you.
Robert Trumbull, I'm a member of the AAC also. With those comments, thanks everybody for coming and representing today and their feelings and emotions. I will, I do first want to lead off that the first requirement for commercial aviation into an airport is a tower and we had a tower on the master plan, so that's kind of important. Why would we need a tower if they weren't directing in that direction, at least some people involved with the process a lot of years ago? I think we've rescued that and we're, we're in a good move. What I want to mention today is the improvements that our soaring has encountered this year is probably doubled this year. Our local people have bought the FBO and have committed to do, improve the conditions for this global soaring site and it really is. The amount of people that I experienced here in the last couple of years, I've been coming here flying for 25, 28 years and I'm seeing a resurgence of foreigners coming to our field again, visitors that are wanting to come here. Our club did six, this is our six Pete for the World Competition Online Contest. So we're really, our, our people that are day-to-day flyers here that live in this community are really putting a lot of effort into improving this and I really appreciate that you're thinking about that soaring community because it's going to bring us a lot of tax revenue in the future. That's really hard to see, you know? It comes in in different ways and it's really hard to put a finger on how much it is. That's why it's been difficult for the soaring community to really have a voice in this community because it's been pretty, you know, it's, it's, it's really an undeveloped asset and I'm really happy that we're going in the direction and thank you all for the efforts that you're putting in and we commit as a community, aviation community to be there, to put the effort in. So thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Is there any further public comment? All right, thank you. And we will close public comment and bring to the board for possible motion.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Gardner?
Even though this is in your district, I'll make the motion. I move that we approve work order 001 to the 24, 2024 Minden Tahoe Airport Planning Services Contract with JUB Engineers Incorporated as presented and authorized County Manager, Public Works Director to execute the work order and any required documents as presented.
It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner. It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Tolbert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Thank you, Ms. McDonnell, and all of you. Agenda item nine for possible action, discussion to approve a $25,000 budget augmentation and adopt resolution 2025 R-051 for, this would be for the fiscal year 2025-26 budget and the extraordinary maintenance fund for the Waterloo Lane Emergency Storm Drain Repair. We have Courtney Walker, Stormwater Program Manager here with us. Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I think it is still morning. Yes, it is technically. My presentation, Courtney Walker, for the record, my presentation will be shorter than the last one. I'm here today to discuss about, discuss a budget augment. If you'll remember, I've been doing the stormwater tour and talking about planning for future projects and planning for replacement of existing infrastructure, and what we have been talking about happening is now happening, and so I would like to discuss the Waterloo Storm Drain Emergency Repair Project. Why that didn't change, there we go. This is a slide that I presented on September 17 amongst several others, but one portion of the presentation was discussing aging storm drain systems throughout our community. This is a kind of a running list of all the ones that we came up with, and I highlighted Waterloo Lane because we have a failure that is occurring right now. And so we're going to want to address that before it gets worse. Essentially, how we found out about it was a local rancher, I won't name his name, he was irrigating his field and, with tailwater, and as that happens, then it enters into our storm drain system to go into further irrigation ditches to be running through the network for the next user to use, and the water was not flowing out. We met with him after we noticed significant flooding in the food closet parking lot and Backpack Buddies. At first, we thought it was maybe some sort of water main break or an irrigation leak or something like that. So he had scheduled to do it again, and we basically followed the water and found that it is an issue with the Douglas County maintained storm drain. The two concrete pipes have become separated, and so if you follow the water down, it actually can't make the exit into the adjacent ditch that it's supposed to be. And so we tried to, we tried to camera it. Summit Plumbing has a camera that they can run through pipes, and we couldn't get all the way to where it is damaged to see the extent of the damage. Unfortunately, there was a lot of debris and water backed up in the pipe because he's, the flood irrigation has happened a couple of times, and it hasn't been able to drain out fully. So there's some maintenance that needs to occur in conjunction with the actual repair of the storm drain. We need to augment the budget because, as you know, in the stormwater budget, we don't have, we don't have a line item for ongoing larger projects, capital projects, and so there's an emergency maintenance or extraordinary maintenance fund that we're requesting to transfer the funds into, and I don't know if you want to elaborate on that at all, Ms. Davidson.
Thank you, Courtney, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager for the record. So our extraordinary maintenance fund was set up as a reserve through the leadership of the County Commission previously for these types of exact things. In the past, we've used it for elevator failures and other various things that we can anticipate throughout the fiscal year, so we are recommending the utilization of this fund.
Thank you, Courtney Walker, for the record. We don't know the exact costs that this repair is going to be, and we have mobilized a contractor, Zach Doan, he's with Impact, and he was able, he's able to start on Monday. He thinks it's going to be about $15,000, but we really don't know until he gets in there and starts excavating, and we can see the extent of the repairs that will need to be made. And so we're requesting the 25,000, but we anticipate that we'll hopefully not use that full amount. So it's a pretty straightforward project. I anticipate this issue occurring in other places, and so we, our team is going to look into potentially purchasing a camera so that we can get ahead of these issues before you see flooding on the spot, so that we can anticipate doing fixes that are not quite as extensive as a complete replacement. There's things you can do to grout it and things like that to extend the life of these systems, but unless we can see what's happening under the ground, then we won't know it's happening until you're seeing flooding or a road is being compromised or something like that. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Tolbert.
Yeah, so this is something that was brought up to me by my friends in the ranching community that was going to be happening, and that it's very important that we, as a county, fulfill our obligation, because as I understand it, the person on the other end of this is not getting the water that they're supposed to be getting, and thus we're impacting the potential yield for this, for this rancher who has provided a section of greenery that we all get to enjoy. So it's important that we jump on this and get this fixed. My other question is that, or thought process is that this is not just a patch, but when we get in there, if we can evaluate that entire system segment and make sure that, you know, it could end up that it pencils to do a full replacement rather than just this patch, because we're going to have to come back and replace it anyway later, so I'd just like to reiterate that we, you know, which I know you already know, but I'm just putting it on the record that, you know, if we do evaluate this and say, look, you know, even if it ends up being something larger, that maybe now that there is a failure that we make, make it a fix, not a patch, I guess is what I'm getting at. Thank you.
Just to respond, Courtney Walker, for the record, I agree 100%. I can tell you that whatever did occur, occurred because it was patched or changed, modified somehow with a smaller pipe, and so it wasn't looked at correctly whenever it was done, and I believe it was sometime in the early 90s when the neighborhood that's right there went in. And so I think, I think that sometimes that's the cause of the issue, so we would definitely not want to repeat that.
And then just, just to reiterate on that, just so I guess everybody understands, my thinking is that I'm not a guy that needs to go chew some butt for a problem having happened. I'm more of the guy that says, what do we got to do? This is where we're at, how do we fix it? So from my perspective, that's, that's where we're at. So it's good to look at the past and see so we don't repeat it, but yeah, just want to be clear that I'm all about, let's get this thing fixed and take care of the people on the other side that are being withheld right now, and I'm sure they're pumping in order to make sure they get their stuff, which is not, you know, water is worth fighting for, right? What's the adage?
Any other questions? Commissioner Gardner.
Not a question, but an observation or a shout out, really. And I know that, and I can get away with this today because our chief deputy district attorney is not here to draw me back into the circle.
Oh, he's monitoring. I'm sure he's, he is attending remotely, so.
Okay, so he can slap my hand remotely. I just wanted to thank, it's, I'm glad you're here today in presenting this because it gives me the opportunity to give you and your crew a shout out for what you did last Thursday in our tremendous issue that we had in, due to flash flooding in the Ruins Roth area. So I want to thank you for that. So, go ahead, Doug, slap my hand.
Excellent work. Excellent work, always.
May I respond just to your kudos?
Sure.
Courtney Walker, for the record, we worked with the Road Department and Emergency Management and the Sheriff's Office and East Fork, and so it was not just like stormwater saved the day. Everybody coordinated together, and we met kind of this morning for an after-action report, and the coordination is good, so.
It's great that you're all working together. Awesome. Okay, we will go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and look for a motion.
Mr. Fixit, that's, wreck it Ralph. Hold on, I gotta scroll back up. Recommended motion, okay. Madam Chair, I recommend, I move that we approve the $25,000 budget augmentation for the Waterloo Lane Emergency Storm Drain Repair.
Can you also add and adopt resolution 2025 R-051?
And adopt resolution 2025 R-01, 51, dash 0, dash 51.
Thank you. Perfect.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tolbert, seconded by Commissioner Rice. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Agenda item 10 for possible action, discussion to approve an interlocal agreement between Douglas County and the Indian Hills General Improvement District to provide $306,412 in residential construction tax park funding for the purpose and installation of playground equipment at James Lee Park, and to adopt resolution 2025 R-071, augmenting the residential construction tax budget by decreasing the budget in the North County Reserve Account by $306,412. Brooke Adi, Community Services Director, and Ryan Stanton, Parks Deputy, Deputy Community Services Director, are here, and we appreciate that. Commissioner Tolbert.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to put it out on the record that I did sit down on this as part of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and did approve that this come before the board, but not that it was approved or anything to that, so just wanted to make sure that I made the declaration that now I'm hearing it for the second time, but as a member of the board for approval. I think I made that clear. Is that clarification understood? Thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brooke Adi, Community Services Director. I'm going to hand the mic over to Ryan Stanton to talk about this project. I might jump in and talk a little bit about the funding. I would also like to note that Chris Johnson, the Indian Hills GID, General Manager, thank you, is also here to, as part of support for this project. So, Ryan, go for it.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, Ryan Stanton, Community Services Deputy Director, for the record. Sounds really funny today, all the microphones, sorry. Here to present to you the James Lee Park Playground Project. So, next slide, Brooke. This project was approved by the Park and Rec Advisory Board Committee as well as the Board of County Commissioners in the CIP for fiscal year '27 through '31. This project is funded by the North County Residential Construction Tax. The current balance in that particular fund is $567,405. And I know Brooke wanted to go into some detail regarding the residential construction tax. I'll finish off these two other points, and I'll let her discuss that in detail. So before you is a rendering of the playground that will be installed. It's a four-piece custom playground design. It's going to have a two-to-five play structure, five-to-12 swing set, and a tri-runner that it's kind of hard to see, but we'll go into some further details there. This project, excuse me, was a proposal from Great Western Recreation for a total of With the interlocal agreement approval by the Board of County Commissioners, the funding will be shifted over to the Indian Hills GID. They will make the purchase of the playground, and we will assist with project management. Indian Hills GID is also utilizing the Omnia Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, which is a competitively bid process for the purchase and installation of this playground.
Thanks, Ryan. Brooke Adi, Community Services Director. We fund projects through a couple different avenues, through the Community Services Department. One of them is using residential construction tax. Now, this is a $1,000 fee that is added to any residential construction permit. The funds that are generated through this fee must be used for park improvements. The funding is jurisdictional, so in the location of the county where it is gathered, that is where it needs to be spent. So there are four areas within the county, so we have North County, South County, Central County, and then we have funds that are generated up at the lake. So these funds were generated in North County, so they must be spent in North County. Douglas County doesn't have any of our parks in North County, so it provides us an opportunity to partner with the GID to help them make some of their park improvements. So that is where the funding is coming for. It is allocated for and collected for park improvements, and it must be spent in the area that it is generated in, generated in.
Ryan Stanton, Deputy Director, Community Services, for the record. Also wanted to.
I, person. Recording in progress. And kids are always lining up to use the tri-runner. That's a very good choice.
We're very excited about the tri-runner. We don't have any of the tri-runners in our Douglas County Parks Playgrounds, but I know there is one at the Ironwood Park. It's very, very popular, so we're excited to add one to the North County.
Are we back up with Chief Deputy District Attorney Doug Ritchie online? Okay, then maybe it's a good time for me to say, we definitely did not take any action that was not on the agenda.
Besides that one thing. Before you is the rendering for the two-to-five structure, again with suggested signage for usage, and all of these play structures are all within that square footage that I just mentioned. There's a kind of an overhead view of the five-to-12, the two-to-five, the playground, or the swing set, and the tri-runner. That's the swing set and the tri-runner. I also wanted to mention too that once this is approved by the Board of County Commissioners, then our local agreement, it will be going to the Indian Hills General Improvement District for their approval October 15, and after that, the Indian Hills General Improvement District will order the playground. And about right now, playgrounds are about eight to 10 weeks of production and delivery, so we would be hopeful that we could schedule an installation pending our winter, hopefully sometime late winter, early spring, and we're hoping that we can also coordinate that with our construction of the Stotick Park Inclusive Playground that you guys approved a couple weeks back. So, again, with the interlocal agreement between Douglas County and Indian Hills Improvement District, upon receipt of the $306,412 in funding from the county, the Indian Hills General Improvement District shall purchase the playground equipment for the James Lee Park Playground Equipment Project. Indian Hills General Improvement District shall assume sole responsibility for the purchase and delivery of the playground equipment to James Lee Park ownership of the playground equipment and any liability arising out of the playground equipment. Douglas County Community Services will administer and manage the installation of the playground equipment by the vendor on behalf of the Indian Hills General Improvement District. Upon completion, the installation of the playground equipment, Indian Hills General Improvement District shall be responsible for all ongoing maintenance, inspections, repair, things like that of the playground. So with that, I'm open to any questions. Appreciate your time.
Any questions?
You know, I can't let anything go. So when it comes to outdoor recreation, I personally have a history in the accessibility world, so I just want to reiterate that upon completion of this, that I know it's not necessarily meant to be ADA compliant, but a level of access is always provided, so I would urge in the whatever website or whatever that advertises this park, that the level of access that is available at the park be identified as far as. the level of access that is available at the park be identified as far as parking and, you know, access and what the services are so that people can make informed decisions. So, that's just my personal input on that one, and other than that, I think it looks great.
Mr. Johnson?
There we go. Now I'm on. Chris Johnson, Indian Hills GID General Manager, for the record. That section of the playground, so we do have two handicap parking spots directly outside the gate right there, and there are ramps going down into that area of the playground. So, all of our sidewalks, everything is ADA compliant up in Indian Hills.
Commissioner Gardner?
You know, I say this every time an item like this comes before us. I just remember years ago that a community service organization would come to the county and get dedicated land and build a park for the county and for the kids. And it's incredible how the costs have just so escalated so much in the requirements that it puts that opportunity out of reach for those community service organizations. So, I appreciate you bringing this to us and making use of these funds that have to be used up in that area. So, thank you.
All right, we'll turn to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and look for a motion. Commissioner Tolbert?
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of an inter-local agreement between Douglas County and the Indian Hills General Improvement District and adopt Resolution 2025-R-071 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tolbert, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Agenda item 11 for presentation-only announcements, reports, updates from county commission members, including updates on the various boards and/or commissions that they may be a member of or a liaison to, or any other meetings functions they have attended, and any requests by a commissioner for discussion of a future agenda item. Commissioner Tolbert?
As with a few of you, I attended the NACO Conference, State Conference, last week, learned some leadership skills and made some connections that I think will help serve as a resource for me in this capacity as a commissioner moving forward. But I also completed the Dimension Friends informational session, which was a lot of good information about, you know, how dementia affects our community and people individually. Another thing is that there's been a lot of talk about traffic today, and after spending most of a week driving in both the LA area and Vegas, I was reminded of how different things are here. And yeah, we have more traffic now than when I was a kid, but in comparison, our roads are still much less congested and a lot easier to get around. Coming back made me personally appreciate what we have, not just the lighter traffic, but also the balance of community space and access that makes this area home. And speaking of home, I'd also like to call everyone's attention to this weekend's activities. Most importantly, in my mind, right off the top, is the Fall Fest and the Coffin Races at Heritage Park. Main Street Gardenville's annual Coffin Races and Fall Festival will be held at Heritage Park Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. It's free, family-friendly, and features the show-stopping Coffin Races. If you haven't, Coffin Races, if you haven't seen, is great. Parade, live music, and performances, and over 60 art and craft vendors, a food truck alley, scarecrow building, and harvest activities. So, it's a great opportunity to get out and experience the community, and I think that's it.
Okay, since our last meeting, I attended a TRPA meeting and I have also been in conversation with one GID that wants to not become a GID and another not GID that wants to become a GID, and it's all very confusing and I'm not sure who does what, how, and how we get a new GID. The people that live on Elks Point would like to form their own GID. We have been selling them water from Roundhill GID, and they're talking about increased services to the, there are people that live in that area, so that remains to be seen. But, once again, I'm getting more complaints about Tahoe Douglas District than any other district at the lake, and I'm not going to name names. However, it would be really lovely if some people would answer their phones once in a while. And I will be attending a solid waste management meeting tomorrow. We have liquid management, solid waste management, water management, all kinds of management up at the lake. And what my main goal is to make sure that we don't get Californicated with our trash collection, and so far, so good. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yesterday, the first Wednesday of every month, we have our Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting, and nothing really earth-shaking to report out of that. As Commissioner Tolbert indicated, along with Commissioner Hales also, last week, we attended the NACO, the Nevada Association of Counties Annual Conference in Las Vegas, and I am proud to accept the role as of January 1st of President of that organization. As such, we will also be bringing the 2026, September 2026 Conference to the Tahoe Blue Event Center on September 22nd through the 24th next year. So, look forward to that opportunity to serve our county in that regard.
Very good. I attended Tahoe Transportation District Meeting yesterday, and I reported already at our last meeting on their goings-on, and I was fortunate to attend NACO in Las Vegas. I wanted to mention that I very much appreciate that Governor Lombardo carved out some generous amount of time to spend with us and speak to us. And I also, I have a list of items to follow up on, and I learned a lot from the conference. It was very good. With that, we'll turn to closing public comment. Oh, excuse me, too soon. County Manager Jennifer Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission and members of the public, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. I did just want to briefly advise the public that as a result of the board direction from our stormwater workshop, we have been undertaking some continuous public engagement outreach efforts. We had a meeting at the Minden Town Board last night, and although the item was listed for presentation only on their agenda, we did get some positive feedback from the members of the town board and some residents who were in attendance asked some good questions and follow-up. We will be attending the Gardenville Town Board Meeting next week. They meet on Tuesday to present, and then we will also be doing additional outreach efforts in each of the commissioner districts. I would encourage members of the public to stay tuned. We will be releasing that information and pushing that out through our PIO once we have those meeting dates and locations squared away. And then also, we are going to be launching a webpage dedicated to our stormwater program engagement efforts, and we would encourage members of the public to look for that and to sign up to be included on our email distribution list so that they can stay involved and engaged in the conversation. And I just very much appreciate how open everyone has been to this discussion. It's really important work and we have a lot more work to do, so looking forward to that.
I will...
I need to piggyback on...
Me, too. So, I want to appreciate county staff for going to the town of Minden and the town of Gardenville, even though the actual workshop was held in my district. I am very pleased that we're reaching out to these town boards and giving additional opportunities for people in my district to hear about what is the current situation and what is being proposed, and I encourage everyone to take advantage of that. Commissioner Gardner?
And I failed to mention, we have that stormwater workshop, the road show, so to speak, happening in South County on Monday, October 13th, at the TRE Community Center at 3939 Carter Way, starting at 5:30. And I know that even though it's geared towards South County, anybody in the county that is interested in attending that, they're certainly welcome. So, I had forgotten to mention that, but that's important outreach that we're doing for our community.
And just a note of recognition that it's a lot of extra hours after regular business day for our staff to be putting these on, and it really shows dedication and I appreciate all of their time. All right, we will go to Agenda Item 12, closing public comment. Do we have any public comment? Mr. Jackson, glad you're here. Come on up.
Get tired of closing the bar. Jim Jackson. Expounding on my earlier comments. My wife asked me one time, "Why do I dress like I do when I come to these meetings?" And I said, "It's to show a sign of respect for the institution." She says, "Do you get it in return?" And I says, "I'm not really expecting anything in return, other than if they will listen to me, take seriously what I say. We don't agree all the time. Most of the time, we don't, especially when it comes to spending money, but we can disagree and still respect each other." What I have a trouble with, and it was brought up to me, is what do I expect you to do in some cases, is when we have an individual or a company in this county that does not respect the residents of this county, then that's when I expect for you to take some sort of action. Will they ever respect it? No. Some businesses just don't. I worked in the entertainment industry for 35 years. You talk about a vicious bunch of people. They are. There is no respect between anybody in that business. It's just a matter of who can get on top fastest and everything. I don't like being called names, especially when they don't apply, and it really offends me when that happens. What can I do about that? Well, there are several things I could do. I've been told by several people what I should do, and I said, "No, that's not the way I operate. I'll make my case and then I'll walk out the door and I'll go on about my business" and stuff. But I think that you, as the county commissioners, need to watch carefully these businesses that come into the county, what their objectives are, how are they going to accomplish those objectives, and are they truly to the benefit of the residents of this county? Sometimes they are and sometimes they aren't. I think we have a case where we're looking at something that is not to the total benefit of the county. The damage that's being done to property values and stuff is going to be hard to replace. I watched a video the other night on cities in Nevada that they expect to have property values crash next year, and it was amazing what the reasons were. And I've watched what's going on in this county, and some of the things that cause those problems are happening in this county. Now, I don't think we're near the state that these other cities are in, such as North Las Vegas, Sparks, Winnemucca, Fernley, Porump, but we could get there quickly, and respect is one of the big things that I think needs to be paid attention to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Is there any other? There is no other public comment. I will close public comment and this meeting is adjourned.